It got packed in here. Nobody was here to talk about.
Kind of faded away at one point, then we got another one back.
I know.
So you never know.
It got to be pretty good size and then after the COVID mess.
And in the longest meeting I think we ever had was.
It kind of fizzled out. Yeah, it changed everybody.
Repaint the fire hydrants.
And then I work upstairs every Sunday.
For about an hour and a half.
Yeah, it was a long.
Really, we're talking about.
I watched, I watched part of it.
We can put, we can put that on here tonight.
It was.
I was just saying, you never, you never know what's gonna happen.
That's right.
You think you know.
Yeah.
No, that's, well done. That's impressive.
Well, we've got, we've got mainly high school kids actually doing the work.
Oh, yeah?
Most studies, yeah.
They do a nice job.
Yeah, they do. They know what they're doing. We got one new person up there we're training.
Get quiet.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
Okay.
I won't be up there forever. Somebody will.
Tommy's, you have anything from Tommy? Okay.
Of course, I'm not the head of it. Gary Poston is, is the, kind of the chief of it. Something goes wrong, he's generally the one we have, has to figure out what's wrong with it.
Nice.
Yeah. There he is.
You know, I almost wore a crazy suit today.
I like that.
I like that a lot.
It's either, it's either for Justin or Jimmy Buffett won. I don't know which one, which it is.
Patreon bet on the Clemson football game, did you, or the, or the Carolina?
All right, I think we can call the September Town of Bulling Springs Council meeting to order. Welcome everyone. First item is adoption of the agenda. If council has had a chance to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt or suggestions to amend?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All right, motion from Councilman Edwards, second from Councilman Green. Although in, all those in favor cast your vote and I guess opposed. Might have to hit refresh. Didn't turn green. You're voting. There we go. All right, the agenda is adopted. Mr. Page, if you want to come up and give us a few words.
Good evening, folks.
Evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I approach? I, I wanted to remind you folks and give you a little something to remember me by. It's been so long. You know, I was sitting back there thinking, this, oh boy, Tommy's not here. And there you came. Anyway. Anyway.
And, and he's probably the only one in the crowd that's not surprised.
Thank you.
Anyway, it's been so long since the COVID mess hit and all, and I'm finally getting to go back around to, to the town councils and city councils and remind you that the Small Business Center is here to help people that want to start and grow small businesses. We want to turn into larger businesses later. But I wanted to give you a couple of updates on the Small Business Center to let you know that we're still kicking. COVID really knocked a loop in the, uh, small business world. Do you remember all the news on TV and all of the newspaper reports was talking? Small business, this, small business sad, this small business closed, this small business is having trouble. I think what that did is it informed the business and corporate communities that small businesses are kind of important. I mean, like, they run the country. Yeah, we gotta have IBM and Ford Motor Company and all the big boys, but small businesses are the ones that make things happen in communities. And that's why I enjoy doing what I do so much because I get to work with those kind of people that want to make a difference. We got a budget allocation increase last year for the first time in a long time. The state gave us forty-five thousand more dollars than we normally get on top of our budget. And that was an indication that the legislature has finally understood and recognized that, hey, you know, small business is pretty important. Let's see if we can't help the Small Business Center. And the Small Business Center network is made up of fifty-eight community colleges. There's one small business center at every one of those colleges. And we all got an extra forty-five thousand last year. Well, we were thrilled. We thought a once and done, but we found out, no, that's gonna be in our budget from now on. So we feel real important enough to be able to be recognized as a value to communities and to businesses in the state of North Carolina. So I'm pleased to be part of that group. I attended the Small Business Center Professional Development Conference in the spring at Carteret Community College in Morehead City. That's when all fifty-eight Small Business Center directors and our state directors all get together and try to do whatever we can to improve our operations and our services that we offer. Uh, one of the things that we did learn about is the fact that we have got a lot of money now to pay counselors. And I'm here to share with you that I have a couple of counselors. I have a CPA that I have working with me now. I pay him. The client doesn't have to pay a thing. It's still no charge. I have some marketing people that can build websites and build a, a social media marketing. I have that. I can pay them. Client doesn't have to pay anything. Have attorneys and I have all these kind of resources available thanks to that forty-five thousand dollars that I can pay these counselors. One of the biggest things that's happened though is I have some help now. I've been by myself for almost eight years. But about four or five months ago, with that extra income, I got to put a new guy on working with me now. He's part-time. But his name is Randy McSwain. He is a retired corporate guy. He knows businesses inside and out and he helps me. I have labeled him a senior business counselor. And he helps me do what I have been so disappointed that I couldn't do, and that is after we get a business started and get them moving, I haven't been able to go back out and follow up like I wanted to. And he's able to do that with me. And so I'm very pleased to have him. Last thing I wanted to share with you is the, uh, the fact that we are sponsoring a Chamber Wine Cellar event. Now, we're not sponsoring the wine. We're sponsoring the scholarship. This is a chamber event and it is going to give thousand-dollar scholarships to one person in every, one student in all six high schools in the county. That's where my in, investment was, would be going. And what we're trying to do is spread the word a little bit about Small Business Center. We're here. And I have people occasionally come in rather, rather frequently and say, I didn't know you were here. What, I didn't know you did that. Did you, can you really do that and not charge me anything? And I'm wanting people to understand that yes, we're here and yes, it's no charge and confidential. So be on the lookout in the next two or three months. I am working with a marketing group now that might get a couple of billboards put up to tell people. Yes, we're here and we're here for, for you if you want to start a business. Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate you allowing me to say hello.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate what you do. Anyone else here that would like to comment on anything that is not on the agenda? All right, Mr. Evans with Gardner Web University update.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you again for having me here to represent the university. Uh, just a couple of quick updates. Students are back if you haven't noticed. I think last time we were talking about they're almost back. Well, they are officially back. Um, football season is underway and our first home game is this weekend against Elon. Uh, so come out and cheer on one of the home teams. Uh, I, I think flags have been in the, the topic of discussion. It's parent weekend or family weekend, so it'd be awesome if we could rotate those out and keep those moving. I, I love the idea and I think the camaraderie that that creates, uh, both high school and collegiate is a great idea. Other sports are underway. We talk about football a lot, college sports. It's all over the news, uh, high school sports on Friday nights. Uh, but our men's soccer team plays another ranked team tonight at seven-thirty. So if I slide out early, that's where I'm heading. Um, and rumor is it's James Madison. They're ranked number seventeen. If our men's team wins tonight, they'll be ranked in the top twenty-five for the first time nationally in university history. Be the first team to be ranked top twenty-five. So quite the feat. Um, we're excited to see what happens. Um, hopefully we'll know by about nine o'clock tonight whether we are or not. Uh, and then the last update I have is around homecoming. We talked about this before October twenty-eighth. Just a reminder that tickets are on sale for the amphitheater. We have Ricky Skaggs coming to concert. Um, we even have, uh, one of our students is one of the opening acts there, so it's a pretty neat opportunity there. And I would recommend you don't wait. We are selling, we are pleasantly surprised at the number of tickets we're selling. So if you're interested in going, don't be a last-minute person. Uh, go ahead and get those taken care of now. But thank you guys.
Thanks, sir.
Flags are going up Thursday.
Flags are going up. Thank you, sir.
Sir.
All right, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Mr. Longino has a few comments before we consider adopting.
Thank you, sir. There are several items on here, so I just wanted to touch on them real quick. Uh, some minutes, uh, some budget amendments, just move funds that were budgeted last year that were not spent into this budget. Uh, the year-end financials are just in there for your reference. Uh, the sewer use ordinance, I put a note in there about that. Um, this is an ordinance that we've used since two thousand and five. Um, we've got references to it across minutes and other documents. Um, but we can't find the signed version of it. Um, so it's the document that we've, you know, continued to use since that time. So I wanted to just ask you all to adopt it so we can sign it and have an official copy of it, uh, and keep on using it. Uh, also put in there a selection of a, um, a firm for Wi-Fi implementation. Uh, this would be downtown and in the park. This is through the Appalachian Regional Commission grant that we obtained. Um, we have our recommendation for Tech Works, which is a local company. And, um, they came in well under budget, so, um, we should be fine with adhering to those costs and, um, saving a little bit of money there.
Okay. There are no questions or, uh, further discussion on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt.
All right, that's a motion from Councilman Green.
Second.
Second from Councilman Thomas. Let me record your votes electronically. All right. The consent agenda is adopted. Next up is a proclamation for finance and accounting week. So Rhonda, you can come on up.
Whereas the Town of Bulling Springs appreciates those who choose to serve the town residents as town employees and whereas the Institute of Finance and Management recognizes September twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth as Finance and Accounting Appreciation Week. And whereas the town's finance department is essential for the operation of the town and the protection of the town taxpayers. And whereas Rhonda Allen has been employed by the town as finance director since two thousand and four. And whereas Ms. Allen ensures her department is well-run and maintained as she gives her talents to the town and residents in maintaining the town's stellar financial performance. Now therefore, the Bulling Springs Town Council hereby designates the week of September twenty-five through twenty-nine as Finance and Accounting Appreciation Week in recognition of Finance Director Rhonda Allen and other support staff in appreciation for all of their work on behalf of the town each day. Thank you very much for what you do.
All right, next is a public hearing on, uh, the annexation petition for parcel six-three-one, six-three-two, and five-eight-eight-nine-three. I will open this, declare the public hearing opened at six forty-one. Mr. Parker?
Good evening. Um, we received an application from Mr. Chris Edwards that the town annex those aforementioned parcels, which are currently labeled as Zero Liman Street. It's about twelve-point-one-six acres. Uh, Mr. Saldo, uh, as required by the general statutes, issued as part of your agenda packet a certificate of sufficiency where the town investigated to make sure that that piece of land would conform with what, um, is our current usage. That town is currently in the ETJ, so it is already zoned appropriately. And then pending your approval of this, um, action, then it would come into the town limits and be subject to, um, those rules and regulations. And I will yield my time back so that public may comment.
All right. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this annexation question? All right, hearing none. We can close the public meeting. Public hearing, excuse me, at six forty-two. All right, questions or comments from council?
So what is the current zoning of the three lots?
I don't have the whole agenda packet. Um, R twenty?
R twenty, R twenty, and R twenty.
Yes, so they're all medium-density residential, but R twenty's our, um, least restrictive residential zoning, so it allows for development with larger lots.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Further questions or comments from council? If not, is there a motion to approve the annexation request?
I'm motion to approve the annexation request.
Okay.
Second motion.
All right, Councilman Litten with the motion, Councilman Green with the second. Any further discussion? If not, you may cast your vote. All right, that, uh, annexation carries. Uh, before we move on to the next, um, public hearing, I, I do want to introduce Mr. Zach Parker, who is the town's first town planner. We, uh, just recently hired in the past few weeks and already hard at work, so welcome, Mr. Parker. We're gonna put you back to work right away. So we will, uh, I guess that's right. So now we will, uh, declare a public hearing open for the zoning map amendment for Three-Eleven East College. This public hearing is opened at six forty-four. And I will turn it over to Mr. Parker.
Thank you. Uh, the property owner and potential tenant at, uh, Three-Eleven East College, which is right now Bulling Springs Property Management, uh, would like to be rezoned from B one to B two. Um, just as a note, B one is our downtown corridor district, so it's more restrictive. Uh, B two is for the out of our core downtown area district. We recommended that, um, it be rezoned because it's consistent with our land use map. The state does require that we issue a statement, um, of plan consistency and then reasonableness, but that's, so that's why that motion, uh, is phrased that way.
All right, thank you, sir. Are there any, uh, members of the public that would like to comment on this zoning map amendment? All right, hearing none. I will declare this public hearing closed at six forty-five and turn it over to council for comments and discussion. Questions?
So it's, it's that property, it used to be Bulling Springs Property Management's a house.
Is there a motion to approve the zoning amendment?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Councilman Edwards with the motion, Councilman Green with the second. Further discussion? If not, you may cast your vote electronically. All right, that carries. And finally, we will open up a public hearing on four-forty-two Gaffney Road zoning map amendment. This public hearing is opened at six forty-six. Mr. Parker?
So this one's a little bit different. Um, this property is wanting to go from B one to B two. The difference here is that it is inconsistent with our land use map. And so the state requires that we issue a plan consistency statement as part of your motion where you to rezone. So that's why this one's a little bit longer. But as long as there is a public benefit to it going against our land use plan, we can override and then subsequently your motion would also amend that land use plan. And so that's why it says it's inconsistent with the land use plan or the future land use map, but it's great potential benefit to the surrounding community. So by moving it from B one to B two, we're allowing greater development of a business in that area. And it's a less restrictive zoning designation because that area is actually not part of our downtown base. It probably, uh, needed to be updated anyway.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments from council? If not, is there a motion to rezone?
Could you close the public hearing?
Oh, excuse me. Thank you, sir. Uh, public hearing is closed at six forty-eight.
Yes, if there's any public.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I think I have this now that we did it twice already. Any, uh, comments from the public on this particular zoning map amendment for four-forty-two Gaffney Road? All right, now we will close the public hearing at six forty-eight. And now we will have questions and comments from council.
Based on recommendations of staff and the planning board, I recommend, um, make a motion that it be approved.
All right, so we have a motion to rezone due to the great potential benefits surrounding the community by Councilman Green.
Second.
Second by Councilman Thomas. Further discussion? If not, you may cast your vote. All right, and that zoning amendment carries as well. Next item up for business is the resolution to file application for financing. Mr. Longino, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, sir. Um, so we have been discussing the, uh, potential purchase of one-oh-one and one-oh-three North Main Street. To acquire these properties, um, staff recommends that, uh, the town take on a loan. Uh, in order to get a loan, uh, any municipality, uh, to get a loan over five-hundred thousand dollars must get approval from the local government commission. Staff has started the process to, um, to move the town or move our application forward with the LGC. Ms. Allen has been filling out the, uh, actual application we have to send in. We've, um, talked to the, uh, potential property owners about it. We've had an appraisal completed. Um, so we're at the point now where we, um, sort of normally would have all these documents together. We would approve them all at once and we would, um, send them to the LGC. Uh, because of the deadline requirements of our local newspaper and, um, the willingness of the LGC to work with us, we're having, uh, we're requesting that you all approve a resolution tonight to file the application for financing. And then a week from tonight, there will be a public hearing on the actual financing package, um, that we'll have to have a public hearing on and then send that to the LGC. So just a little bit of backstory. Ms. Allen and I talked to the LGC last week and we were like, look, we're not sure if we're gonna make this timeline because of the, the public notice requirements and everything. And they were very willing to work with us if we moved forward with the resolution tonight, sent them the resolution, and then waited until we had the financing stuff together next week and then sent them that. So, um, if you all are inclined to move forward with, um, with the taking on of the debt and the purchase of this property, um, just happy to report that the LGC's been willing to work with us on that timeline to keep things moving forward. So what we have before you tonight really is just a resolution to submit the application. Again, the, the financing, public hearing and the actual financing package will be reviewed at the meeting a week from tonight. And then I also have a, uh, an agreement for, uh, purchase that Mr. Schweppe drew up, um, just to kind of let the, um, property owners know that we're serious about moving forward with the purchase, but it is all contingent upon approval of the financing next week after the public hearing and, and after we get those, um, financing packages back. So I hope that makes sense. I'm happy to answer any questions on either of those two items or the meeting next week.
Comments or questions?
Are there any fees if in the public hearing there's negative feedback and we decide to withdraw from the application?
Uh, no, sir. When we sub, we would submit the full application after the public hearing next week. And it's a fifteen-hundred dollar or twelve-hundred dollar fee, I think, for the application, so it's.
Okay.
Other questions, comments? If not, is there a motion to approve the finance application?
Yes, sir. We can do the, the resolution and the.
Other resolution.
Um, the agreement at the same time, or we can do resolution first and then agreement to purchase second.
I'd be glad to make a motion to approve resolution, uh, to file the application and also to approve the intended purchase.
Be glad to second that.
All right, Councilman Thomas with that motion and Councilman Green with the second. Further discussion on this issue for tonight? If not, you can cast your votes. All right, that carries. Lastly, we have, uh, interim manager appointment and contract, um, with the Foothills Regional Commission for interim manager services, which will be effective September the eighth. Um, Mr. Longino, if you want to.
Um, I, that about sums it up, Mr. Mayor. Um, I will say that the, um, the, the plan for, uh, for Foothills is, um, well, it would be to appoint, uh, Ms. Dana Stansbury as the interim town manager. Uh, but she will, uh, utilize, uh, Ms. Charlotte Sullivan and Mr. Alan Tony as well. Um, that's their finance director and community and economic development director, uh, respectively. Their plan is to take sort of a, a team approach to, to being here, to be available to the staff for, uh, whatever pops up, whether it's, uh, um, grant or finance project um, or just general administrative needs, uh, that Ms. Stansbury can handle. So, uh, there, I don't know if Alan came in yet, but I know Dana and Charlotte are here. If you have any questions, uh, the agreement's in your packet and, um, the motion would make it, uh, effective that, uh, she gets the keys on September the five P M, so. What happens if the key get lost? Hopefully we got a backup.
Yeah. I will say that when we met with them, every question that we had, they were readily ready to answer and already a few steps ahead. You know, almost in anticipation of the questions that we had. It, it made me feel very comfortable with, uh, with working with them. Um, and I, I do appreciate the team approach that they're talking about and, um, excellent, good people. So, just for what that's worth.
And I, and I agree with all those statements.
Can we clarify number one item E, which says to spend two days a week in person in Bulling Springs?
Yes, sir.
Does that, does that mean a total of sixteen hours throughout the week or just two days as it reads? Does that, does that mean a total of sixteen hours throughout the week or just two days as it reads? Like they're gonna be here a Monday and a Wednesday or, I mean, I know it won't be the same day every week, but how, how are we defining that?
Yeah, the, the schedule that we talked about um, was to, was basically Tuesday, Thursday.
Okay.
That's, I think that's pretty firm, um, as far as having somebody in the office here, um, eight to five or um, or thereabouts um, for those two days. But then, of course, available by phone call or email other days as well. They, I think we really wanted something, the discussion, cause we had a meeting with the staff as well, so Foothills and the staff, we all met. And we really wanted to be able to say, okay, if somebody's gonna be in the office on Tuesday or Thursday at, you know, this time, so they can schedule a meeting if they needed to meet with somebody. So having that consistent person here, but also being available outside of those two days as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? If not, is there a motion to approve that contract, Foothills?
So moved.
Councilman Green with the motion?
Second.
Councilman Edwards with the second. If there's no further discussion, you may cast your vote.
Does there need to be a, does that also to appoint her as the, I mean, is that all included? Do we have to have a different motion to appoint her as?
Good question.
Um, I, the way I have it worded, if um, if you wouldn't mind amending your motion to basically read like that, we can do them both at the same time. To approve the contract and to appoint Ms. Stansbury as interim.
I do that.
Alright, Councilman.
I'll follow this second.
Alright.
Okay, okay, sorry.
No, that's a good question. Alright, um, now you may cast your vote on the motion to approve the contract and appoint Ms. Stansbury.
I'd just like to make a statement, you know, I do, after meeting with the, uh, the uh, group and with the staff that we have, I feel very confident that we're gonna continue to move forward and make progress. So I'm, I think we're fortunate to have them and fortunate to have the staff we have. So I think, although we'll, Ms. Justin, we're gonna show him we're not gonna miss us. We're gonna make him say, boy, I wish I was back over there.
And with that, Mr. Longino, you're up.
Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, just a few quick updates. Um, they are working me right down to the last day, I will say. The next couple of days, the calendar's pretty full. But um, wanted to mention that um, we have uh, wifi down at the Broad River Greenway, um, near the ranger station. Um, haven't been down there to test exactly what the footprint is of that, but we installed it on Friday. Um, tested it out over the weekend and I was texting Lance today, which normally he can't get text messages and we were texting back. So he's uh, um, he's happy to have that accessibility and then we're happy from a public safety perspective to be able to have that access down there. So um, next would be to see, see kinda how far it reaches and see if um, we can do the same setup on the south side with the other building down there and um, keep moving forward with getting uh, Ms. Dur in an office down there so that she's actually at the Greenway. I know it seems early, but Ms. Holland wants me to make sure to mention that we need to be thinking about a grand marshal for the Christmas parade. Um, I think it's technically in November. It's one of the last days in November. Um, but be thinking about who you all uh, would wanna appoint for that. And she told me to give you the deadline of uh, October. So at our October meeting, we'll need someone officially named as the grand marshal. Um, and that's, that's for the Fourth of July parade, but you'll need to get another, another shirt for the Christmas parade.
You may think of when I bought this shirt, but I didn't. I just got it out of my closet. I, I, I do have, you know, something to think about. I think maybe we could ask uh, Ms. Hensley in, in honor of, or in memory of, of Jerry.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
Um, something else to um, to be on the lookout for, I believe at the October meeting, Mr. Parker will bring a um, a hotel feasibility study agreement forward. Uh, we've been in talks with uh, the TDA, Gardner Web and the county about partnering on that to see um, to see if a hotel would be feasible in Boiling Springs. So when you uh, recruit or want to recruit a hotel, the first thing a hotel asks you is have you done a feasibility study and can I see it? And so um, our goal is to, to line that up, um, and then be able to go out and potentially recruit another hotel to Boiling Springs. Um, I've already mentioned, but just to reiterate, that a week from tonight, September twelfth, at six thirty, there'll be a public hearing to review the financing package for the purchase of one oh one and one oh three North Main Street. In this room. And then finally, the uh, November meeting is gonna conflict with um, voting day. So if you all are in agreement, we will go ahead and push the meeting back to November fourteenth, which is the following Tuesday. Do you wanna motion for that? Okay. If somebody will make a motion to push that?
So moved.
Mr. Edwards with the motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Thomas, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good deal.
And?
November fourteenth?
Fourteenth, that's six thirty.
Sir.
That's it?
That's it.
Alright. Councilman Thomas?
Yeah, first of all, I wanna say thank you to Justin, uh, for your hard work and for all the dedication and commitment that you've shown to the town and professionalism. And you're gonna be greatly missed and uh, we appreciate, I appreciate greatly the hard work. And Rhonda Allen, she's uh, she's kept the books for many years here. Uh, e- even though we said thank you, thank you cannot be, and uh, I mean, she, she's done a phenomenal job. And so, um, when I ran for council, I wanted to see a couple of different things, uh, the Christmas tree lighting, so we got that checked off. I wanted to see concerts on Main Street, got that checked off. Wanted to see a town planner, got that checked off. So I'm about done. But then I also wanted to see downtown wifi. And so it's just, I, I think, but it's not just me. I think it's a, it's a really good concept. It's a board that's driven toward progression, but not so fast that we don't forget where our roots and where we came from. So I'm just still excited to be a part of this town and, and what's happening here and many more great things to come. So, so thank you to the staff for making that happen. So, that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Edwards?
Yeah, I'll second what Councilman Thomas said about, you know, all the great work Justin has done here. Uh, it's sad to see you go, but can appreciate the, the opportunity and you'll definitely be missed. Uh, Rhonda, I've only known you for two years now, but I see the quality come out in your accounting and we have some great budget discussions in the last two years, so I appreciate that. Um, I will give a little plug for the YMCA. We met two weeks ago for their monthly board. Um, they're starting to come out with COVID and seeing some improvements on their numbers and financials and memberships and that's great. Um, we did, uh, Councilman Thomas and Justin and I worked over the last month, primarily Justin, to put together revised contract and are having some negotiations with them. Uh, I think we're making good progress in defining what those metrics should be for them. Um, and the final plug is they, the YMCA is, has an app available and they're trying to encourage all the town members to sign up. It's called the Cleveland County YMCA NC for North Carolina. So um, when you sign up for it and register, you enter to win a, you enter into a raffle of one hundred bucks. So they're trying to really draw everybody to that uh, app, app on your phone so you can get more notifications about what's happening at the Y. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Litten?
Uh, best of luck to you, Justin. You know, a good manager moves the mark a little higher and also develops people. And, and I think you did both of those and a vast number of other things as well. So it's been, it's been my pleasure and I'd like to thank Rhonda as well. Uh, she's, she's consistent and done a good job and been here a number of years and we do appreciate that. I'd be glad if we ever do get a state budget for several reasons. But the main one is uh, that we can get the stoplight fixed. That'd be nice. So I hope to be around long enough to see that done. And then Marty, you got to hang around long enough to get the Old Town Hall.
That's right, that's right.
Renovate it or whatever, cause that's on your bucket list too.
Yeah.
But it's a good one to have on there. So that's, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Green?
I don't like being last.
Well, I'm last this time.
Well, I mean, first thing I'd like to do is express my deepest sympathies to you. I know it's been tough for you and uh, uh, I know you miss your dad, as will a lot of people. But I want you to know that uh, and in my thoughts and my prayers and next few days, I know it'll be tough.
Thank you.
I think your dad left you in good shape to follow, carry on the tradition and I think you'll do that well. Uh, Justin, sorry to see you go and I thought, well, the shirt, shirt, you know, he, he's got shirts, he wears shirts. But I had to do something else to kinda upstage your movement, so let's try this. Oh, they come apart. Maybe I won't upstage you.
There it is.
Here we go.
There it is.
Dang.
You don't have any of these, do you?
No, I don't. Where do I get a pair?
Oh, well, this is the only pair there is. It's been a pleasure. You have uh, moved us forward. Uh, uh, one thing I've always admired is when we charge you to do something, you get it done. And uh, so we're gonna, we're gonna miss you and uh, we're gonna make you miss us every chance we get.
For sure.
Uh, Rhonda goes without saying, you know, I understand your job really well and I appreciate how you do it. And uh, so uh, we've been in a lot of trouble with if we didn't have somebody, somebody like you. I think sometimes we don't see the importance of that position, but uh, it, it is, it is very important. We got a lot of things going on and uh, Justin's gonna step aside, but we're gonna keep on trucking. And uh, I think, I know that's what he'd want us to do with the, with the helpful staff we have. And now we got a, we got a town pl- planner and uh, we stole him from Spindale and I went to Spindale to play pickleball. And I went for a couple of reasons. One, I wanna see their facility, you know, we got a gym just like that down the road here. Uh, but uh, glad to have you, Zach. Uh, uh, I've known Zach for, and his parents for a long time and I feel sure that he's gonna do us, do us a bang up job. Uh, proud to be a part of the town. It's a good place to be.
Thank you, sir. Well, I have two things and the first one includes some more wherethes. So Justin, come on up.
Whereas Justin Longino served as the town manager of the town of Boiling Springs from April twenty twenty-one until September twenty twenty-three. Whereas Justin's hard work, talent and leadership were essential in the town receiving several grants, including a T-Mobile grant for wifi in downtown Boiling Springs, a grant from the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality for electric vehicle chargers and a rural transformation grant from the North Carolina Department of Commerce to improve the appearance of downtown by constructing a courtyard beside the Old Town Post Office. And whereas Justin's commitment to respectful growth has furthered the implementation of the town's downtown master plan while considering the safety of pedestrians and motorists on town streets. And whereas Justin encouraged community business, community and business involvement by establishing the land use stakeholder committee and park stakeholder committee. And whereas Justin keeps the community aware of local events by establishing the town's monthly newsletter, The Springs. And whereas Justin is visible in the community by devoting time to civic duties as an active rotarian, serving on the web stock committee as well as establishing the music on main concert series. And whereas Justin introduced elevated holiday couture, I practiced that word a couple of times.
What does that mean?
To the citizens of Boiling Springs with his stylish and uniquely patterned suits. Now therefore be it resolved by the town council of the town of Boiling Springs that this resolution is passed in honor of Justin Longino and we extend our gratitude and appreciation to you for your years of exemplary service as town manager. We congratulate Justin for a job well done and wish him continued success and happiness as he begins the next phase of his management career in North Carolina municipal government. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you all for coming out, um, and staff for all you do. Um, my heart's beating a million times or whatever you say. I'll try to, try to say this. I, I do wanna say thank you so much, uh, for, for all the well wishes from all of you. Uh, regarding the passing of my dad on August thirty-first. Um, a man who, who, who has been a huge part of this town, a huge part of Gardner Web, uh, for about fifty years. We've been joking a little bit. It's not really a joke. He would, he would go to Ingalls and, and just ask random people up there, what was for dinner that night? And, you know, in an age where if some random person came up to me, I would figure out a way out of the conversation. Um, a stranger didn't stay a stranger very long, uh, with him. And then he would come home and, and cook, cook for us. Uh, we've received, you know, specific instances of, of lives that he impacted at Gardner Web in particular from the seventies, the eighties, the nineties, the two thousands and the two thousand teens. Um, just really specific, uh, i- it's just amazing. Um, I, I, I just wanna end by saying this, that he always, I, I don't even know if it was quite half a joke, that if there was a Lowe's in Boiling Springs, um, or a place that had lumber, then he would never have to leave town. And, and you know, I've thought about uh, what I would, what I would take from that. And that's because he understood that this community is, is right here. That, that the town and the churches and, and, and the college all grew up together and that, you know, we, we bring in people from all over, but we are such a tight-knit community that you don't have to look outside. Um, we support each other here. Boiling Springs, one town, one community, one university. I know that's out of order. Um, for God and for humanity. And that's the kinda man that he was. Um, and so uh, I really do appreciate all of you, uh, for, for, for how you've supported me and my family over these past couple of days and, and will continue to. But it just, it just makes me glad to be from Boiling Springs, North Carolina. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Well, say it, my friend.
Thank you for giving me a few minutes.
Yeah, absolutely. That's good to see all of you again.
Glad you was behind us.
Absolutely.
Sorry for hurting you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. My checklist is getting really short.
Yeah, that's pretty good. That's pretty good.
But it's not me.
Pat called you out there. You gotta stick around till we get that sound.
It's not me, y'all babies. These are the things that make you nervous.
No, you're right. I mean, I mean, it's good to see that some of us been done.
Well, we get frustrated at times, you know, we want, we want to save, like, right now, which is today. But you gotta think a long game.
Yeah.
And we'll get that intersection. I mean, I really think that's our focus now. The, the stoplights gonna get done.
Absolutely.
That's gonna get done.
It's gonna get done. But we're gonna check everything out and Town Hall's gonna get done.
I think it'll get done.
I don't know about Town Hall. I don't have much hope on that.
Anyway, yeah, we, we gonna get it done. Just, just little bites at a time.
That's right.
So thank you guys. Thank you. I'm glad to be here.
Wish you well.
Thank you.